At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for February 24th, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, let the roll call show everyone is here except for City Attorney Lisa Hamame. And we'll move on to approval of city council minutes, February 10th, 2020.
I have some to do.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Page one, the end of, after the bills, it says, a comment about, Kibble stated is, there's a check about Ishkin Kat and his wife works at, works there, so it should be he will abstain from the vote. And the next section, the motion to approve the bills, the motion should say Kennedy, and actually, I don't know if it was Councilwoman Walton or Dilg that had seconded it, but I didn't make the motion. And let's see, on page three, the, in that tax abatement policy down at the bottom, the start of the third sentence says he, it should read, "He stated if it is a million-dollar improvement, the tax loss to the city during the course of the abatement would be $17,000 a year. The chart recommended a project value between half a million and two and a half million should be allowed a tax abatement for one to two years, or $34,000 in tax revenue. But if you end up with a jewel that wouldn't have been brought about without the abatement, that changes the complexion of things." And then on page five, let's see, the second line, it says, oh, let's see, no, shoot. I marked this up and I always end up getting clumsy in here. Oh, essentially, it's saying, Kibble stated, "You shouldn't be excused just because you tell someone you won't be there." So, that's all I had. Thank you.
I'll move the minute as adjusted.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. No bills this evening. Move on to the approval of tonight's agenda.
Move the agenda.
One second.
All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. This time, we will open the floor for public comment. Please be sure to state your name and address. All right, we will close public comment and move on to the discussion of downtown. And in his last meeting, Mr. Bob Donahue.
Thank you. I will be brief. I know we have other items tonight on the agenda. Brief report, and then I'll just briefly hit a couple highlights on the annual report. So, the new business directory was received today, and we started distribution just today. So, we'll get those out this week to businesses at City Hall. Excuse me. Mr. Dan Schwegler, as you know, followed through immediately, and that is on later, later on tonight's agenda for the establishing a district, a public hearing for that district. Worked with Dan, he called me right after the meeting, last meeting. Have met, have had a flurry of people meeting on their projects before I take off. It's going to be exciting, the building projects that are lining up for next, this year. The first one that you'll see will be the State Farm Insurance Building. I think it's 121 East Lake. He does not need Planning Commission approval, he needs to get in the building department, but he's going to redo the window openings and the cornice and the whole facade, similar to the buildings next door. The redevelopment liquor license materials, I've been working with city manager and court treasurer on all the requirements of the city and what, in our ordinance, the requirements we have of them to prepare themselves to come forward. So, we've had discussions with the attorney for the theater's liquor license attorney. This will be the first redevelopment liquor license in the city. And that's, as you know, it's, it's unlimited in the sense that the license stays in the city with the property. Paul, save me if I fall on this. There's two requirements for any applicant. They have to invest at least $75,000. And also, they have to prove that there has been 200,000, at least $200,000 of investment within the DDA district, which is by law, the redevelopment district for this purpose. And so, we've well exceeded that, as we talk about a couple highlights in the report. We've had over about $9 million of investment the last three or four years. So, and we expect that following up on this redevelopment license for the theater, there are two others that have expressed interest in following through redevelopment licenses Also worked with the Cultural Arts Commission this past, last week, moving forward with the mural projects. I know that's proceeding through the Planning Commission. We developed a list of potential sites. Of course, that's all subject to the building owners. We've had a lot of interest by the building owners, so they're waiting for the ordinance to, to be completed. This annual report, much like the other two, just a couple of highlights, really. If you see the table of contents, you'll know what other items are in there. But if we go to the list, I call them team accomplishments, and I'm not going to go through that three-page list. But it talks about, and I think it's, it's amazing, quite frankly, because as we're in our fourth year now, going into our fourth year, these are the kinds of accomplishments we're going to have every year. So, we're going to have two or three pages of accomplishments, organizationally, promotions and marketing, design-wise, and basic economic development advancements, every year, because we've really, we've really gone past that entry-level downtown management. In the appendix, I think there's a, there's a, a report that I've attached the last couple of years, but I think now in transition, it's good to look at that. It's called "How Main Street or Downtown Management Programs Evolve and Change." So, you'll see that the first phase, which is really identified as a catalyst phase, when you start to comprehensively manage a downtown, that's usually three to five years. Well, we've kind of gone through that quickly, and, because, you know, we already had a downtown development authority that was doing things. We started doing things differently, and we had support for downtown before the position. So, we quickly went through the catalyst phase, we're in the growth phase, probably about a year or two sooner than we normally would have been. So, and I think that it just kind of gives you some good information of, of how things will continue to evolve with strong support. So, I think it's a good piece to be aware of. Of course, the budget that you will see, the DDA at its board meeting and goals and objectives meeting last week, we passed our budget, which will be coming to you for approval, and our projects and priorities are lined up on a sheet here with the bud, the corresponding budget items. So, this time, we decided to put all of our projects and priorities this year with the direct line item accounts in the budget. A lot easier to track our priorities, so. And since we had our budget slightly increased with, what was it, about 5%? And again, we had the bond payoff last year, so we've distributed more funds to do more things. The farmer's market, I think we had a good year. We really brought the farmer's market budget back into where it should be. We had the previous year, five weeks without any revenue, five rainouts, and we were short on sponsorship. So, this year, we had great weather, no rainouts, and a lot more sponsorship. And there's a photo of the sponsor board in there. And so, the downtown development authority board members and farmer's market manager and myself, we sold out that sponsor board. So, the market is in good shape. We need $4,000 more sponsorship in all the renewals, but I think, I think we have a good plan, good plan in place for the farmer's market. And lastly, I think this has been a great year because two of our most difficult properties, the Bonner Buildings. One, it's just a joy to look at it, drive by it, walk in it, and appreciate it, and then watching the progress on the other, this RCA building, and looking at those plans. So, there are photos in here of both projects. And so, I just think it, 2019 was a stellar year, and we're well on our way 2020 to do a lot more. And that's all I have, really. I, again, want to thank you. I know we talked earlier. Appreciate everyone's kind thoughts and words, and I look forward to being in South Lion often. Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
The, you, when you were talking about the Lion Theater, the $75,000 investment, is that what they've put in there already? Will that qualify for their donation in that?
There's a window. I think they can go back two or three years, Paul?
It's a five-year window.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they, they easily, when they acquired it about four years ago, well, three and a half years.
Well, they put a lot of money into the place.
There, there was a structural problem.
That's what I was hoping.
And they had to redo a lot of structural work, and they put about 50,000 in then. Then they've done a lot of interior modifications, so I'm pretty sure they've already exceeded 75,000.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Bob, two quick questions. The 2020 events list, when is that scheduled to be published?
That's a joint city DDA project, and I think the goal is to get it out in sometime in March. I know that the admin staff are confirming a lot of those dates.
The other, the other question is, you know, the, the large concrete block that appears to be used as an anchor for the banner pole?
Right.
Is that permanent, or is that just a temporary? We're going to get an anchor for that, or what?
No, that was an emergency with the high winds when the Cool Yule banner was up.
Okay.
So, that was an emergency setup. Actually, Doug Varney with the DPW, we're going to have to have those poles reinstalled and properly cemented at the base.
Okay, so.
Because there, there's a lot of movement on those in high winds, so the bases have to be cemented in.
So, is that the road commission coming back out to do that, or are we going to do that, or what?
No, we've been approved. That, that expense is on us.
Okay. Okay. So, is this something that we're looking at in the budget, or it's going to be done before the budget?
It's relatively inexpensive. I think the DDA can handle that.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Councilmember Richards?
Bob, just a quickie here. Is the Redevelopment Act, as it pertains to the theater, going to be discussed later on tonight, on, at this meeting?
No. No, that'll come forward when the applications are, are advanced. That'll come to the city in the future.
Okay, so there's no point in going into some details and?
No, not tonight.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's it, yeah.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob, I want to catch you before you leave tonight. I would just had an opportunity to speak with a lot of people in the city. They didn't know your name, but they knew your work. And I can't tell you the residents in this town that have moved in in the past two to five years that have noticed the change in the downtown area. It's very, very noticeable. And so, what I wanted to do on their behalf and on mine, again, is to thank you for your incredible services to the city over these past three, 3.5 years. Your input on the city and its future has been significant, and I think I'm pretty accurate when I say, no other person has been successful in transitioning that downtown from where it was in 2015, when I first ran for city council, to where it is today. I clearly was one of those people that was highly critical of the investments that were not being made in the downtown area, including investments that weren't being made by the city, some lack of leadership that was coming from city council. And things have changed, and there is a great working unit now, and I think you're absolutely right. We're probably one of the few city councils in Oakland County that will work really hard to unanimously approve whatever is needed to help that downtown move forward. But the city needs to take, continue to take that investment step. But I think what you did, and what makes you so unique, is that you understood the business model of investment. You understood that the investment portion had to come from the city. We need to train qualified personnel, such as yourself, to lead. We needed business owners that had to step up and start making an investment, which they had not done for decades, for decades. It had not been done. So, I think what you did is, you did the right thing. I mean, you came in and really, really helped the city move forward. I want to thank you. We still have a couple of businesses that are resisting a little bit of change, and I would encourage those businesses that, given the DDA's renaissance, its rebirth, its historical renovation under your leadership, that those businesses eventually would do the right thing for the DDA, for the city, and jump on board and become part of the solution, and not be part of a continuing problem that has existed for decades. But your leadership has been, without a doubt, remarkable. So, thank you for your commitment, for your tenacity, your courage, your leadership and your friendship, and you being an ex-coach, correct, for football?
Yes.
Well, I'm going to.
I know that's a problem, but.
Well, that's okay. That's okay. I found a quote from one of my favorite football coaches that I thought it was very fitting for you. "After all the cheers have died down and the stadium is empty, and the headlines have been written, and after you are back in the quiet of your room and the championship ring has been placed on the dresser, and after all the pomp and fanfare has faded, the enduring thing that is left is the dedication to doing with our lives the very best we can to make the world a better place in which to live." Vince Lombardi, and thank you, thank you, for making South Lion a better place to live.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Dilg?
I promised you I'd ask you one more time. Any update on the draft rate?
I can tell you that the, the project was delayed about three weeks. The purchase order was put on hold until environmental testing was done, and that was finished last week. I think it went well, because I know of previous testing didn't find anything, but every person does their due diligence. And so, I think that we'll see a closing in the next 15 to 30 days.
Excellent. And I just wanted to say, I didn't have a lot of time working with you, but I really appreciate all your work, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to the fire chief report with Chief Vogel.
We finally have wrapped up the federal grant session. We put in for two grants, one with Oakland County departments, and then one with Washtenaw County. And one was for the SCBA, and then with some miscellaneous tools grant that Washtenaw County's going for. We have a new member we hired today from the high school. He's cadet. The campaign of getting into schools has worked. There's, we're trying to get, working with the Howell High School Academy, kind of alive again, and I think that's, our posters and reaching out to the counselors has worked. It's really nice in the fire station right now with all the new members. It's kind of alive, which kind of leads me to my last thing. I really need to thank the crews. It has been so busy, so crazy. We had eight calls today. We've had a bunch over the weekend, fires, and a little bit of everything, some hectic, hectic stuff, and the crews keep working very, very hard. I'm so proud of them. And I just want to shout out publicly to them and thank them for all their work and effort that they put in, so. That's it for today.
Thanks, Chief. Does anyone have anything for Chief Vogel? Councilmember Kennedy?
Chief, I appreciate you recognizing the efforts of the, the crew there. I mean, you know, I know they're a little reluctant to get in the spotlight, so I appreciate you doing that for them.
Yeah, I keep trying. I keep poking at them to, just one of those things they don't want to do. But I thank them. So, I'll just bring it up here. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to the police chief report with Chief Sovik.
Okay. We're involved in a, in a program called Hope Not Handcuffs for people that need some assistance, substance abuse and other issues. No questions asked, they come into the station, and we hook them up with an angel who gets them successfully placed into a rehab center. So, we were fortunate enough to assist an individual last week coming in the program and getting him placed, so that was, that's working. Lieutenant Bakinae attended a youth vaping meeting at the 52nd District Court back on the 14th. Discussed the many components of the process as far as educational, skill-building, legal, marketing tricks, setting goals, and there were, talked about the placing somebody from our department on the vaping coalition, so Sergeant Faugh is going to be on that coalition meeting with other outside agencies and the courts and the judges. So, for first-time offenders, there's something put in place by the 52nd District Court, and we're going to be involved in that. Officers Jacobs and Rapp raised $592 for Special Olympics this past Saturday, jumping, taking the polar plunge and jumping into Wald Lake this past weekend, so hopefully, we're going to really push that next week and see if we can get those donations up. Last Thursday, officers responded to an injured dog at Pontiac Trail in 11 Mile. It turned out to be a domesticated Arctic fox, so that, that has created a lot of buzz. Apparently, if you, if you're successful in getting a, a DNR permit for these domesticated animals, you can actually hold them. This particular one escaped from a Travis Road on New Hudson and made its way down to the bike path on Pontiac Trail in 11 Mile. So, we ended up taking it to the Howell Nature Center, and the, the owner came forward and, I apparently took ownership of that. But just to show the power, that the power of Facebook, we had 130 shares, 116 comments, and 24,356 people were reached. I mean, that's just, that's crazy, so. Facebook's good sometimes, sometimes it's not, but in this situation. Our in-car cameras, our system, our access points, everything is up and running. To watch our new IT company and the IT people from WatchGuard work as a team was just amazing. So, we are, we're up and running, and it's been a very smooth transaction, transition. I applied for two grants today through the MMRMA. One was for $6,000 for the reimbursements for those in-car cameras, and then an additional $11,400 for the data storage for those in-car cameras specifically for law enforcement. So, I submitted those applications today, and I'll keep you advised as, when I hear things, so. Other than that, that's it.
Great. Anyone have anything for Chief Sovik tonight? Thanks, Chief. On to new business number one, attorney waiver of conflict.
Our city planner recently contacted our office relating to a special land use permit for the Salvation Army. Our current city attorney, Lisa Hamame, represented Nager Companies before the special land use permit was approved. Since Rosati Schultz represents the city and Nager Companies, there exists a conflict of interest under the rules of professional conduct. In light of these rules, for Rosati and Schultz continue to representation of the city in the special land use permit described, both the city and Mr. Nager must waive the conflict. If the contract, if the city council consents to the waiver, Ms. Hamame will not be the attorney representing the city in this manner. I've attached information regarding the waiver of conflict with a letter dated February 13th, 2020. It's tonight's actions, approve or not approve, that we consent to Rosati Schultz's representation of the city in connection with the special land use permit issued to Nager Companies for the Salvation Army at South Lion Square, and that the city waive any conflict that may exist with regard to Rosati Schultz's representation of Nager Companies. Our attorney is here tonight to briefly discuss this item. If you have anything further, we can both potentially answer the questions.
Matthew, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Do you have anything you would like to add to that, or are you just here for questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here for questions. I mean, I think in general, Councilmember Kurtswell raised, raised a good clarification just before the meeting regarding the specific nature of the conflict. I mean, to clarify, Ms. Hamame no longer represents Nager Companies on this specific issue, but because of the past representation on this specific issue, there is that potential for a technical conflict there. And insofar that she continues to represent Nager in other matters, or the fir, it's a client of the firm, you're waiving the conflict with respect to the firm, so that then I could step in and represent the city on any issues related to this.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, you know, when I worked many, many years ago at one of the big firms in Detroit, they would set up these firewalls. Okay, so that, so that tells me then that if you come in and handle matters for the Najor, in which the city is having, let's say, conflict with or issues with, you would not be discussing those matters with Lisa. There would be a firewall, she would not be permitted to look at the file, look at any notes. I just want to make sure council understands what, what does a law firm do in, in dealing with that conflict of interest, so.
Right, that's absolutely right. Basically, as soon as you approve the waiver, Ms. Hamame would be walled off from this particular issue, and I would effectively be standing in and acting as the city attorney on that issue. So, yeah, there would not be sharing of information regarding anything that she learned through Nager Companies during the course of her representation, and I, you know, I would not be going to her for advice or, or reporting, other than what's in the public domain here. She would not be actively involved or involved at all in that particular issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to continue, and the reason I'm bringing that up is because it's important, I think, for council to understand that if they want to communicate with her on this matter, they can't do it, because that firewall is up. So, any, any communications that council may have, questions they may have, need to go to the Rosati firm. If you don't have Matt's email, then they could get it to the right person, but you don't email questions to Lisa, because that firewall is going to be up.
Right, that's a very good point. And I'm sure if, if you do email a thing to her, she'll, she'll politely send it to me with a, with a little note reminding of that separation.
Great. Councilmember Kennedy?
Based on the discussion, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we consent to Rosati Schultz's representation of the city in connection with the special land use permit issued to Nager Companies for the Salvation Army at South Lion Square, and that the city waive any conflict that may exist with regard to Rosati Schultz's representation of Nager Companies.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for the clarification, Councilmember Kurtswell and Matthew.
Thank you.
New business number two this evening, dispatch lockup service agreement.
The current agreement with the city of Novi will expire on June 30th of this year. The present rate is $134,604. Novi officials have offered to renew the agreement for three years with annual increases of 4%. The agreement includes dispatch services for both the police and fire departments, as well as short-term prisoner lockup. The proposed rates for each year are in front of you.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
I move to approve the three-year agreement as presented with the city of Novi to provide dispatch and lockup services for the city, for the South Lion Police and Fire Departments.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We have a motion by Councilmember Kurtswell, supported by Councilmember Walton, to approve the three-year agreement as presented with the city of Novi to provide dispatch and lockup services for the South Lion Police and Fire Departments. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. New business number three this evening, set public hearing to establish the commercial rehabilitation district.
The city recently adopted a tax abatement policy for our community. This policy outlined the requirements for establishing a district and approving the property for a tax abatement. We've received requests from the owners of Parcel 21-2360-023, the RCA building, to establish a commercial rehabilitation district. In order to establish a district, you must set a public hearing and follow our requirements within the law.
within the law. I've attached information regarding the written request to establish a district, and then I'm identifying the boundaries of the district. The possible course of action is to set or not set the public hearing for Monday, March 9th, 2020, 7:30 PM, for the establishment of the commercial rehabilitation district for parcel 80-21-20-360-023. This is not a requirement of the law, but in order to try to be open and transparent, I requested this be placed on the agenda, so we can establish the public hearing to make the public aware of what actually we're doing, because this is our first one that we are doing. We're happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this.
Does anyone have anything for Bob or Paul?
Yeah.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Okay, to clarify that, okay, I'm sure we'll get more requests for an abatement coming in the future, but I might understand it's not required that each request go before council, is that what you're saying?
Each request does go before council, but the request isn't necessarily that we ask council to set up a date for a public hearing, we can just set the public hearing, but trying to be open and transparent, because this is new, I'm requesting, as city council does for all other public hearings, for you to set that date tonight, for that date being March 9th, 2020.
Okay, all right, I understand.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to set the date for the public hearing for Monday, March 9th, 2020, at 7:30 PM, for the establishment of the commercial rehabilitation district for parcel 80-21-20-360-023.
We have a motion in a second, motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Kibble, to set the date of the public hearing for Monday, March 9th, 2020, at 7:30 PM, the establishment of the commercial rehabilitation district for parcel 80-21-20-360-023. Any further discussion? Councilmember Kibble?
I would hope that this is the practice that we always would entertain in the event that more people come in. I mean, I like the idea of the public having the best opportunity to be able to see what's going on, so that extra little push is helpful.
Anyone have anything else? Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Paul. We will now move on to the budget this evening. And the managers' report.
Why not take counsel, we're in the process of reviewing the resumes for the soon-to-be-vacant DDA Economic Development Director position, will be myself and the Chair of the DDA will be reviewing those this week, and looking to set up interviews, hopefully for the next couple of weeks. We have received demolition asbestos removal bids for the old Slara Building, as well as the building on the end, old house on the end of Washington, that's in McCady Park. Those items are being reviewed by our engineers, and we expect to have everything completed before the end of June. And that's all I have, behalf of answering questions that you may have.
Councilmember Kibble?
I was curious if you have any insight on consumers in the, you know, at the Slara Building, there's, it's been, I don't know, three or four days they've been tangling over there, and I know that they'd been in the middle of the night to the neighboring properties.
Some of the work they've been doing out there isn't necessarily related to the Slara Building, it's related to other work they're doing within their permits that they're, you know, that they're allowed to do within our community.
They're just open trints, so they're dealing with stuff, okay, thank you.
All right, thanks Paul. Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Are we going to get like a schematic printout sheet of the bids that have come in, on how they stacked up, you know, about the demolition?
Yes, we will be, we'll be awarding those bids hopefully within the next meeting or two.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much, Paul.
Actually, I do have one other thing, I was going to do it in council comments, but I think it's probably best suited for Paul. The conversation that we had last meeting about the excused absence aspect of the rules of procedures, the only problem that I've got is, in the event that something happened, someone, their bowling league turns out to be on the second Monday and the third, or the second and fourth Monday of the month, and all they have to do is call in, and we really don't have any recourse. That's an exaggeration of what the circumstances are, but we've never really imposed ourselves on anything that went beyond what seemed like a reasonable request that they were asking for being off. I think that we would be better off trying to create some mechanism where there was what seemed to be abusive patterns of absentee council people, that we had the ability to at least request information as to, you know, why they're not following the responsibility of meeting their obligation to being on council. And I think if we were to wait until we have an issue before us, it would end up making it seem as though we're simply acting on that because they don't like that person that's missing all the time. I don't know what the answer is, but I would like us to at least entertain whether there's something that we could do that might give us, you know, like, is it a femla absence? Is it a personal illness absence? You know, if it became habitual, I guess, so I'd just like to have some consideration on thinking that through and see if there's some vehicle we might be able to use. Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will open the floor for public comment, please remember to state your name and address. We will close public comment for this evening and move on to council comments. We'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Kibble tonight.
I was able to attend the Mardi Gras Jazz with T-Bone Paxton yesterday at the library, that was an awful lot of fun. Unfortunately, they had another gig booked in St. Clair Shores, and so they couldn't end up doing any encores or anything, so they had an hour's worth of drive, and so they had to wrap up and book as quickly as possible, but it was an awful lot of fun. So I was just, I'd just like to also add that the Cool Yule wrap-up meeting, being on Wednesday at 6 o'clock at City Hall, I think that'll end up being an interesting conversation, and a lot of hurrahs will go on, and maybe some suggestions on how to even amplify what are existing packages, so that's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Dil?
Thank you. Just quickly, I just wanted to say, I was really appreciated being able to speak, be videoed by the South Lion Cable Commission. I just want to say, they have, they just run such a professional, I can't even think of the right word, it's just very professional, they do such a great job, I can't believe how many they did in one day and how they got them up so fast. Really informative videos, I watched them all, about a lot of different nonprofits and other things that are going on in the city, so I just wanted to see how much I appreciated that, and that's all, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, just a reminder that in the next few weeks, each household will receive their questionnaire for the 2020 census. It is essential that all residents respond to the questionnaire and are counted. The census determines how much money we receive in federal and state funding, as well as other things, and if you are not counted, that money is lost for the next 10 years. Our snowbirds who spend three to four months in Florida should complete it identifying South Lion as their residence. Again, every resident needs to be counted, and a reminder notice will also be included in the upcoming water bill. Some disappointing news to report, the Road Commission for Oakland County has announced that the closure of Eight Mile Road between Chub and Napier will continue now until mid-March. The project's running a little bit behind schedule, it was supposed to be completed by today, but it's taking longer than expected. And some good news, I have heard that the investigation into the fire at the Lion Canteen has been completed, and that re will start to be removed in the next two weeks, depending on the weather. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Richards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report back to the audience, the community, that our program that we had last week for, at the Historical Society, the Freight House, it was wonderful, it was well-attended, I believe three of us on council were there, and people came from a long ways off. I sat next to a gentleman from Imlee City, and he had a clipboard and he was taking notes, and other people came we'd never seen before, and they were related to some of the principal people in our club, okay? It's not a club, it's a society, okay? And they added to the meeting, okay, with questions. And the gentleman that put this on is based in Howell, okay, and it was famous, it was amazing, okay, this is all I can tell you. And the programs that the society puts together are planned in advance, like six months to three-quarters of a year in advance, with interviews, and the officers that are on that group go out to those other societies where they have programs and interview the people, okay, and select which ones they want and how to schedule it through the year. It's quite a bit of work that goes on behind the scenes, and I just wanted to bring that up and let you know that it went over very well. I just want to make a short note about something we haven't discussed very much, this is Black History Month, as you all know, I would assume. When I was a college student, a long time ago, at least 50 years, okay, the Black History Month was in its infancy, something new, never been done before, okay? And it wasn't as big a deal, it was celebrated on college campuses by a few students and carrying cards and showing a movie and having placards and forming groups, and that's about it. But since then, it's spread to all over the country, and it's a much bigger deal than it ever was, of course, it's 50 years, okay, look at, but we all need to be aware of the learning and the possibilities of learning the history of the black history in our country in America, goes before the Revolutionary War. Next item and last item, this is the time of year, folks, and all of us there, I'm speaking to the people viewing this on Channel 19, when we look back at what we did the last previous year, or two years, and try to set a goal for this coming year, providing our health holds good and we can keep up the momentum. One of my projects, I do several things out of the box, but one of my projects is historical research, which I do in conjunction with the society that I belong to, and as it looks to be this year, there's more coming up than I can handle, although I made a couple of fairly good discoveries last year, which is great, great news. By that, I mean something that's not known. It might have been out there, but it was overlooked and nobody knew about it, okay? And it made a significant difference. Anyway, anybody out there that would like to be involved in research, please get ahold of me personally, or just leave a message at City Hall, and I'll be getting in touch with you, and see if we can work something out and work ahead, and see what's involved. What I'm talking about is the unknown history of the city of South Lion. I've previously stated 80% is known, there's a good 20% that is unknown, it's not known, and that's what we would like to explore, you know? Anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to keep my comments short tonight, at the last meeting, I talked about a mental health first-aider class that I was taking, and I encouraged our fire chief to have somebody become a trainer in that class. After I took the class, I had the opportunity to go to a mental health town hall by Congresswoman Haley Stevens, and let me tell you what a phenomenal event that was. Mental health is not being taken seriously enough anywhere, and I want everyone to encourage you to get out there, learn more about it, and be an advocate for those that need you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My comments tonight are about food. First of all, I would like to remind everyone that tomorrow's Punske Day, or more commonly known as Fat Tuesday down in the south Louisiana. I always make sure that I purchase my Punskes at South Lion Village Bakery, which is just two doors north of Third Monk Brewery. So we all know Tuesday, there'll be a line outside the door over at the bakery, these come once a year, we all know that they're jelly and cream-filled pastries. So please spend your Punske dollars right here in South Lion, you don't need to go anyplace else, stay right here in South Lion and buy your Punskes. Speaking of great food, I recently had lunch at the South Lion Hotel and had the pleasure to meet the bakery chef, Amy, and taste her carrot cake. It's a recipe from her mother Fay, and the cream cheese icing on that carrot cake was absolutely fabulous. If you like carrot cake, please go to the hotel. Next, beginning on Friday, we'll start the fish fry season in the city. Please stay in South Lion, spend your dollars, your fish fry dollars in the city of South Lion. Just about every restaurant in town has a great fish fry on their menu. St. Joseph's Church will serve about 400 to 500 people each Friday at their fish fries, and they do a takeout. So there are plenty of places to go for your Friday fish fry. I would ask that you spend your money right here in South Lion, you do not need to go anyplace else, there's plenty of places to go during this season, right here in South Lion. So thank you, good night, everybody, and I'll see you at a fish fry.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurzweil. I just have a couple things this evening, too. Some congratulations to our friends over at Cub Scout Pack 38, they had their Arrow of the Light and crossover ceremony for several of their scouts on Sunday, which I was not able to attend, but thankfully, Councilmember Kennedy was able to make it, and I just wanted to congratulate those kids. Alexander Jarrett, Bradley Fisher, Jacob Grave, Joseph Sonnenberger, Summer Hampton, Gabrielle Jose, William Cooney, Curvin LaCrone, Colin Diffin, and Ethan Felley, congratulations to you all, that's a very big honor, and sorry that I could not be there. On a side note, 40 years ago to the day, today, the United States Men's National Hockey Team knocked off the Finland team in the gold medal game, two days after knocking off the unstoppable machine that was the Soviet Union Red Army team. Depending on who you talk to, I was not here for it. Last year, you saw how excited I was about the moon landing, this would be the one that I would take the time machine to. I would have loved to have been there in Lake Placid on that day. If you talk to people that were here for it, it wasn't even aired on live television somehow, which is absolutely hard to imagine in the world we live in today. So I just thought, if you somehow missed that, today is the 40th anniversary of that gold medal, and the United States has not won the gold medal since then, so here's looking to 2022. With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Have a great night, all.